Where'd he go?
Hey, we're on.
John, are you live?
I'm on.
Okay.
I'm on. Wish you could cheer me for it.
Thank you. This is November 23rd. It's a work session for Public Works Budget for 2016. Do we want to do a roll call? Do we need to?
The only one that is excused in absent is trustee Tre Scott. Staff president, present is manager Gerard, superintendent Kirk Page, and accountant Lois Stonehouse.
For that. So, if you checked your mailboxes before you came in tonight, you will see new numbers for the water department, wastewater, and solid waste. And they include the 1.75 wage increase, 5% health insurance decrease, and the water rate was not changed. In the budget, it's recommended that we do a decrease in the gallon rate. This new budget takes that away and leaves it right where it is right now.
He's at 23.
And the other piece that's reflected in here is, remember when you had your your audit, the discussion about GASB requirements for unfunded liability? That's included in this also. And the retirement.
Who was that?
There, well, what was the percentage loss on the MERS?
Oh, the MERS.
Time loss.
Every year, the MERS percentage goes up or down depending on.
This year's a little higher. This year's a little higher though because of the GASB corrections.
Yes. Yes, so it went up a little bit, so that also reflects that. And that's based on a percentage of wages. So there was a.
Like just 1% or was, did it change or?
Yes, it did.
I mean.
It went up, it was less than 1%. But since I had the actual numbers on the record, I didn't have them back.
Okay. So we have.
Dan?
Yes, Dan?
We also see an increase in replacement improvements of $17,800.
So I was just gonna see was what the. So we got a $18,000 increase to the bottom line for expenditures. And what did you say?
It's under replacement improvements or $17,800 increase.
Seventeen six, that's the water improvement.
Well, but remember, he said he was gonna add the Northwoods project.
Right.
To help offset the increase.
By 9114.
So I'm assuming that the decrease, the fact that we left the water rates the same, that money is is shown in replacement improvements, right?
Right.
And that was the Northwoods project.
So if you notice, like I mentioned, the wastewater fund and the solid waste fund, with just the labor adjustment and the insurance adjustment, it was so minor that there was a change in the expenses and revenues. But it was so minor that it doesn't require any change in terms of, you know, change in the rate or, you know, the monthly pickup charges. I mean, we're talking hundreds of dollars. And Lois pointed out, I think it was in the water, one of the labor line items. I typed it in incorrectly. Remember which one that was, Lois?
Administration, full time. Should be 35, 30.
Yeah, so I'm short $500.
There was, I think, an $18,000 decrease to wages, though. Let me see that. Because of the health.
The health insurance.
Yeah, that made a big difference. So this was going under the premise that we not decrease the water rate.
Correct.
We wanted to see how much of an impact that would have.
As recommended.
Right, that's what I mean, because we've, I don't know, I'm kinda leaning that way, because if we do have to have an increase next year, it's not gonna be as sizable. And if people's bills are relatively the same this year, the net result for the 800 and some customers who have water in sewer is gonna be nominal. And the water raised, water customers won't see really anything.
No, they won't see nothing.
Yeah, Ernie, I was looking at you. Sorry, Ernie.
I'll let Ernie, I'll let Ernie go.
You already had a chance.
You had your shot?
Oh geez, well, I'm gonna go home.
The question I have on that, if we leave, that is with that increase of our, don't do anything to it, there's 23 cents in there.
Right.
My personal feeling is that if it goes up next year, for whatever reason, that 23 cents is gonna be part of that decrease in that. So if it goes up 30 cents and we got 23 cents in there, I'm only looking at a 7 cent increase to the people in that.
Well, remember, though, he added the Northwoods project because of that 23 cents. What did you say it amounted to, like $20,000?
Seventeen six.
Okay, 17.
Seventeen six.
It's gonna add 17, which is what it actually changed.
So the whole pack is basically brought back 20, 21 and 1/2 cents.
So, plus if I left out the 500, there's another penny right there, so it's pretty much accounted for.
Can you explain that Northwoods project, exactly what you're gonna do with the dollars?
Yes, that's a, that's a complete recoat of the interior and exterior at a cost of $83,000. Or $88,000.
You're talking about the tank?
Northwoods tank, yes.
Is that the one you were, we were talking about, you said it would be $80,000 in 2020? Something like that?
Yes, 2020, yep.
So this is a preliminary to keep, to get it to 2020?
Correct. So five years, so instead of doing it, because I just got the report, you know, like a week ago. We had planned to do an exterior, I think it was exterior repaint in 2016. But after the inspection, you know, the interior's gonna be need repainting in probably five years. So we deferred the exterior to coincide with the interior. You know, instead of taking the tank down twice. Because there's more cost involved in that than other than the actual painting. You know, because we have to take the tank down, as we discussed at the last meeting, means purchasing more water from the city, pumping more water. So instead of having two projects, we're just gonna have one project.
So is this the cathodic?
No, it's got, it got the cathodic, which I had been budgeting for in previous years.
That's the one that's $80,000.
But that came off. And this was added in its place. And I had one more comment there, maybe it's just a clarification or maybe even another question. Danny had suggested that there was an increase in the replacement improvement. There wasn't in the budget, so I, I'm not sure what you were looking at there. I think last year, Lois ended up taking, taking some out of that fund because we exhausted the contingency fund. So there was not an increase in, in the budget number.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, our budget book of 891-955 that's showing a total of, for that's replacement improvement. Page 59111, of $314,620. And the sheet I just got, I'm showing a price of $332,220. So that's, that's a $17,800 increase from what was in our book.
Right. I just added that.
That's under replacement improvement.
But I mean, at the last meeting, you were saying that there was already a $100,000 increase. Or maybe I misunderstood what you were saying.
No, I, what I'm seeing is, is we were talking about the fact that we'd left the rate for water the same in this sheet that you, that we have now.
Yep.
And so I compared, you know, where the changes are between the two that we, the original one we had and now this one. And I'm showing a $17,800 change, increase in replacement and improvement miscellaneous.
Yep.
So I'm assuming that's where.
Right, that's.
That's where that money went.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood.
And that's for Northwoods, because that's where it would come out of anyways, replacement improvement or repair, yeah, replacement.
So getting, getting back to Ernie's question then, basically, with the rate increase next year from the city or whatever, if we increase our rates by 32 cents, the residents are gonna see a 32 cent increase in their rate, correct? They're not gonna see, because we didn't do it this year, they're not gonna see 10 cent increase in their rate.
Well, no, it's not correct, because if our rates increase, that's only one line item in the million dollar budget. Okay.
Well, I guess my question would be then.
It's not a 1:1 ratio.
No, but my question would be, is you took, you took $17,000 basically, and I don't know if you included, I really don't know how much money we say, we get for leaving our water rates the same, you know, even an approximate, but is that, is that, in other words, you weren't planning on doing a Northwoods tank next year, correct?
With the first budget.
Right.
With the first budget. So now with this budget, we're planning on doing a Northwoods. At what point in time are we planning on doing the Northwoods tank?
2020.
2020, so then that means, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where, we weren't gonna do it next year, so we're not gonna make up that 23 cents in it next year. And we're actually not gonna see that till 2020, and then by then, I guess I'm just looking for, where Ernie was going with this, was the fact that we didn't raise our rates this, this year. We didn't lower our rates this year to show a savings to the residents. Where does that get made up in the following year? And actually, it won't get made up, because like you said, if it, if the increase is 32 cents next year, whatever the budget goes, we're gonna see at least, we're not gonna see a decrease because we didn't, we're not gonna see anything change in the budget because we didn't, we didn't lower the rates this year, so I guess is where I'm going.
Yeah, the original discussion that you had was, was a desire to take that additional 23 cents. If, if you reduce, if you didn't reduce the, if you did not reduce the rate, that additional 23 cents to set aside towards a future project, to earmark for a future project.
Well, I think the initial discussion was set aside to offset any increases next year, is what I thought was the initial discussion, but that got changed.
Yeah, either way, I mean, there were several things that were talked about. The point, point being is that 23 cents only generated $17,000. $20,000 at the most at the outside, so it wouldn't do very much to, to modify a rate increase from, you know, from the city. If we get one, we won't know. The water rate study's gonna be done, I'm presuming we will, since they raised the rates internally. I'm presuming there'll be a rate increase of some sort to us, at least for the portion of the system that serves the township. Not for the whole system, but just for that portion.
Well, when you, when you say you didn't think it's gonna do much, I don't understand that, because basically, if 20, if a 23 cent decrease saves us $20,000, and a 23 cent increase next year would be $20,000, that's a wash, correct?
I meant percentage wise, in terms of an increase. You're not gonna see it, it's only one, as Kirk said, that's only one factor. The cost of water from the city's one factor that goes into determining rates.
No, I'm, what I'm talking about is, is if this was set aside specifically for any rate increase next year, any rate increase next year would come out of that $17,000 or $18,000, whatever it comes out to be, by a 23 cent savings of this year, it's still gonna be a 23 cents increase of next year, it should be a wash. Because you should be able to have that $17,000 savings, okay, let's get it transferred into now to, we transfer that into the revenues, because now that saves us having to get this increase. So I, when you say it doesn't really, it ain't mattered that much, it's, increase is increase, no matter how we look at it.
I was just assigning a specific project to that number that you said you wanted to save.
Right, and I, I understand that. What I'm saying is, is I think initially the discussion was is to put that money aside to offset any rate increases next year.
Yeah, we could, that's about 3, about 3% roughly of our, of our rate.
Well, you can do whatever you want, but I, you know, if I don't charge, if I don't start charging this year, or 2016 for that, for that Northwoods project, okay, I was gonna charge next year, I'm gonna start charging, I think it's $22,000 something. Because it'll be over four years instead of five years.
The the feeling of the board was that the savings of the 23 cents, it's either going to be used in some way for a project, or it may be the intent of the board, that that be squirreled away and just held in whatever that amounts to, or whatever it generates, for a savings on some anticipated increase that's on its way. I think either way,
It's a savings.
It is, is okay.
Right.
But if, if it takes passage of the board, satisfaction on the board members to, to set it aside rather than use it on a project, you don't lose anything. You don't lose a damn thing, because it's, it's still there. And all it takes is coming back before the board and say, I know that you put it here, squirreled it away so that it would be, ease the pain of an increase. But now we've come to the board and we're asking you to let us use it for something else. That's what they're really fishing for.
If I understand it, is that right?
And realistically, the board, you know, whatever the board decides to do, we do. I mean, that's the way it is. And you know, realistically, we're guessing what the increase might be. Just because there's an increase of 7% across the board, the water rates for city residents, doesn't necessarily mean there'll be a 7% increase for our portion of the system. You know, I mean, it could be, it could be very small, it could be more than, we have no idea what it's gonna be. And it'll be determined by the outside consultant, it won't be determined by the city market.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask a question then, because if, if you say, I heard you say that you were planning on putting $22,000 in for, if we didn't do the Northwoods tank for 2020, correct, next year?
Yep.
So by us, by us taking that $18,000, $20,000 this year, that means you won't take $22,000 out next year, or you will?
You'd have to take more.
Take more next year, because you'd only be spreading it over four years instead of five. So it'd be an increase of 20, it'd be 22 plus, a quarter more.
If you approve the rate that you're talking about right now, I'll go ahead and put in a 17 six this year, or 16. And in 2017, I'll put in $2,000, or $17,600. The alternative is wait until 2020.
So by, so by basically.
Adding $88,000.
By basically saying that you're going to use that money this year, you've now, instead of making it a a larger increase per year to cover till 2020, instead of making a four-year loan, or five-year loan, you're making it a four-year loan. You should have enough by, if we use our money this year, you should have enough by 2020 to do that job.
Correct, yep.
And if we don't give you the increase, you'll be $20,000 short by, in 2020? Or approximately?
Thereabouts, right.
But at any time, if there are rate increase next year, we don't have to take the whole rate increase. We can say, well, we're just gonna pass a half of it, and we're gonna take the rest of the money out of somewhere else. That's what other townships has done in the past. And that's all they, you know, like John said, you squirrel it away. Well, you can put it towards a project, but if you don't wanna levy out 23 cents next year, let's say we're only gonna do it 12 cents, and then we're gonna take the money out of another fund, you can do that also.
But I don't, I don't think that, everything I see in our, in our, in our waterfront, everything else, that we don't have places to take that money.
No, generally, it's pretty well tightly.
All it would take to get over this hurdle is for someone to make a motion to pull out the money in there for the Northwest project.
Well, it's. I don't, I don't even think we even need a motion, because it's already designed into, into budget. So if we accept the budget.
Need a consensus.
Just need a consensus on the budget.
Yeah, we're not gonna make, we can't make a motion here anyway.
Well, that's right, your, your decision that you're, you're dealing with is, do you set it aside to offset rates, or do you put it towards a project? I mean, that's, that's the decision of the board. And then whatever that decision is, Kirk revises his budget to meet that.
And we can accept this second budget by consensus and then change our mind Tuesday, if you want. But if, or somebody says, all right, I thought about it over the week, and we, I think we need to make a motion to pull it out and save it for rates next year. And if it goes, it doesn't, you know, so.
It's not a big deal.
I, I think the, the one thing I'd like to see unfortunately, that we haven't seen, and obviously it's because of the CIP, but I really need to, I really wanna see our projected projects that we have with a priority on those projects. Because I don't, I mean, we weren't planning on doing the Northwoods tank till 2020. What projects do we have that the priority's gonna have to be 2016, 2017, 2018? I, I really wanna see those, because I, like I said, we, we see this thing in here for the interceptor and the reline, you know, that, that's been sitting there for quite a while. Four years that we haven't, we haven't done anything on that. So at some point in time, I've gotta believe that that's gonna have to be coming up to the point where we need to do it. I, I don't wanna get to the point where we get a failure, and then it's gonna cost us three times as much, because we gotta dig up everything just to repair the whole thing. So, you know, those are the things that I really want to, we don't really have a an accurate thing that we can say, okay, fine, we'll give you this 23 cents this year, because that's gonna cover your Northwoods one. But you know what? The interceptor needs to be done too. So do you have $93,000 set aside someplace for that? And if we don't, then I'm gonna say, well, then no, take that $23,000 or whatever we got and stick it in for the interceptor. Because we have to start prioritizing. We, we can't just go yearly to year and all of a sudden say, oh, hey, by the way, we need to do our Northwoods tank next year. That's the kind of stuff that, I mean, to do a right budget, that's the thing that we have to look at, I think. And that's, that to me is the most important part. And that's the one missing link in our whole budget, as far as I'm concerned.
Then we're not using the CIP. I've got nine things that I wanna talk about next year in work session types, or forum discussion, or whatever that we need to address. CIP is number one. So there's nothing to say that we can't pass the budget the way it is, with whatever tweaks we're making. And, you know, January 2nd or 3rd, or whatever that first meeting is, we hit it and say, okay, let's pull out the CIP, let's see how it fits in. I'm sure Kirk's got some kind of a plan of action. We can have him type it up, give us 1, 2, 3, 4. This is what it's gonna cost, and we can hone in. We can change the budget anytime we want to. So that was kind of my plan. I didn't really get into it too much as to what I wanted to talk about, because I knew this was more important. I didn't want to take a lot of time. You know, not that it's not important too, but that's kind of my plan, is to hit all of these. And if you wanna keep CIP first, so we can, and look at water. And that's why I said, if we pass either one of these, it doesn't matter. By consensus, get it done for the year. And then say, okay, you know what, we all thought about it, and we think that we need to pull that 23 cents out and save it for rates. We can do that.
And I'd like to really, I'd like to see a start of that earlier than later. I mean, I don't, I really would like to see us into the wintertime, in January, February, March, whatever. Because I think we need to really be ready when it comes time for budget time coming.
I'm working on it right now, and my intent was to have it for the first land and commission meeting in December.
Because that, that to me would be, because this is, obviously the the funds is, is, you know, the stormwater and wastewater and water funds have been our biggest stumbling block. I think it's, a lot of it is because we can't get a, the way I, my problem is I can't get a grasp of what we need to do, and what, where things come from. I just, when I see numbers and I don't see anything concrete to where those numbers are going, that causes a problem. I think it causes a problem to everybody. So I think the quicker we get that, and I also would like, I mean, besides the priority, I would like some idea of when we feel this needs to be done. I know if something's a priority one, does that mean we have to do it this year? Does that mean that's the first thing we gotta do? Those kind of things, you know, it's like, okay, priority three, can it wait two years? Or can we do one, two, and three priorities this year, or whatever?
Or can we save more money by jumping this and doing this one first?
Well, and that's the whole point of using the CIP, and shame on us for not really using it.
Right, right.
We said that last year. And that was Dennis's idea, when he put the budget together, that we'd have that as a backup, and it just kind of fell apart. So I think if we started, I don't have a problem doing it in January. We'll either put a work session together, or try it in the forum discussion, see if we can start. We probably need a good hour.
Oh, easily.
So a work session is probably a better idea after the first. And just, so we've got a little more of a plan for the year, and get it ready for the next board. Randy?
I was just gonna say the same, you know, along with the CIP, you should put an emphasis on your strategic plan as well, because that impacts the CIP in some areas.
That's number five, but I can move it up.
Yeah. Now, you know, with regard to the, the recommendation of Northwoods tank, you know, I agree, you know, with everything that trustee Pompo said. You know, the interceptor's been on there for a long time. And I would suspect, and you know, Kirk can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would suspect that when you grabbed the Northwoods tank, you felt that that was a higher priority than the sewer interceptor, because it's the water system, the municipal water system, and the tank has to be maintained. So I don't, you know, that, that's one of the struggles with priorities, you know, it's, it's, what's facing it today is the issue. And, you know, and the interceptor is, is there, but if is it at the top of the list? And that's what you need to know, I mean, you guys need to know that.
And the other end of that is, it's two different funds. Because the tank would be water, the interceptor would be the wastewater. So it's two different funds we have to look at.
Sure, and priorities change, you know, the, we, right off the bat, we, we attacked the most severe issue on the interceptor, that was several years ago, because we had a, a manhole on the bypass that was just, it was close to a stream, close to the edge of the road. And there was, happened to be even a gas main going through that manhole. You know, so consequently, it collected grease, you know, so that was really the most urgent, and we, and we dealt with that as soon as we could. And I think that was like $90,000, whatever it was. But, you know, priorities change. And I, to be honest, a big priority changer for me was the road project. Okay? So like, for example, the water mains in Trowbridge Park needed to be upgraded. Okay, I just found that out in 2013. I officially found it out in terms of the report that had to be submitted to the U for our reliability. They're basically undersized, and we need to connect dead ends where possible. Now, the problem with that is, and, and, you know, when we first looked at the, at the road project, I called the county to find out, okay, exactly how is this gonna work in terms of water and sewer utilities? Because I had kind of assumed they were gonna be, like, one project would each pay in their own way. And basically, the answer was, the county, you know, wasn't involved at all. So everything was pretty much up to the township. Okay, so you had already, you know, had millage to do the roads, but I had nothing to do the water main upgrades. Okay, so that doesn't mean I'm not gonna do it. But, but the, my master plan, my reliability plan calls for basically, as the mains reach their useful life, to do those upgrades. Okay, well, that's not gonna be for maybe at least another 20 years. Okay?
You gotta jumpstart your project.
But because you're doing the road project, okay, that got moved way ahead. So instead of being kind of a low priority, it became a higher priority. Now, when I looked at just replacing the mains that needed replacing, or upsizing basically, in Trowbridge Park, when, when we were first looking at financing, the cost was roughly $7.5 million. Well, that, that's a big, that's a big cost, okay? So what we ultimately ended up doing, working with the, you know, UP engineers, who are also working on basically engineering your, your road upgrades now, it's, it's one of those, you gotta look at both projects. And the deal is, what you're doing right now is not necessarily gonna last for 50 years, 40 years, 50 years. But it's gonna last long enough so that, you know, by the time, and, and we are gonna do, I mean, you just approved, I think it was what, a $3 million project applying for funding from the DWRF for the water main portion. But obviously, that's not all, all the work that needs to be done. But it's the most critical, that's gonna interface, you know, with the road projects, with, you know, scheduling the road projects, you know, more appropriately. So but still, that's, that's a big amount of money.
Right.
But the idea being, the remainder, you know, when it comes time to actually do those replacements, the road will also at that point need some upgrades, so that's.
Well, and I go back, you know, and, don't get me wrong, I, I'm not saying that the Northwoods tank is any less more priority than the interceptor. But, you know, I looked at it from the standpoint that if, if the interceptor goes, we got no place to put anything.
Well, that's true.
So, and, and, and I guess I might, might, you know, and I know we spent $63,000 on it. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, when we did it initially, this, the money that, the reason we did it then is, is whatever project we had to do after that point, we didn't need to. we had to do after that point, we didn't need to dig it up. It was called, we could all be done without being dug up.
Uh, pretty much, yes. It's, it's, uh, right, lining.
Right. So, my, I get, you know, so I guess when we, we think about priority for the interceptors is, you know, what, how long can we go without having to do that $93,000?
Well, structurally, it, it's mainly the things we're looking at, uh, is, uh, and, and we're actually, we're going to actually do a revaluation in 2016 because that's also included in the grant that we're probably going to be getting. But we won't be getting that until like later in the year, October, which is the, the state budget year. But I might start doing some work in advance. And that's going to be, uh, like 90% funded or 95% funded.
Right.
Through a grant. But part of that is actually, again, going in and evaluating visually, uh, you know, what needs to be done to, to make the corrections.
Yeah.
So, those numbers are going to be upgraded and we'll be able to, you know...
Right. And I think, I think as a board, I think that's the kind of stuff we need to see, is there any evaluations? Even, even, you know, the water system out here, obviously, where they're old and, you know, so any evaluations that are done with that, it only helps us when it comes time to saying, okay, we have to budget.
Oh, right. I mean, that's...
$70,000 extra dollars next year.
Absolutely, right.
Yeah, so...
You look at what needs to be done and what it's going to cost.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Randy, go ahead.
We're talking about the Northwoods Tank now. We're talking $17,000 plus dollars.
Seventeen six.
Or set.
Correct, yep.
Now, are you actually physically going to do that in 16 or are you putting the dollars away for 2020?
No, 2020 is going to be the work.
So, this money is going to set...
Estimated cost is $88,000.
But this 17, 6, 17, 8 is going to be set aside somewhere?
Well, correct.
Is that my understanding?
But again, it goes in that replacement improvement fund, which in an ideal world, at the end of the year, that money's still there. But again, you know, if any part of the budget exceeds, you know, the budget, any expenses exceed, then, and I, I try to budget 5% contingency, which is kind of conservative, but, you know. So, once you exceed that 5%, guess what's next? Replacement improvement.
I just...
I mean, I, I think that's a prudent way to do it. Uh, I'm just going to say, it's, it's kind of different than the township. I mean, you, you assess properties, you know exactly what your revenues are going to be in terms of taxes coming in, okay? I don't know that, you know? So, I, I can speculate on how much, uh, water's going to be sold or wastewater. That's basically, that's it. And that, and that varies. And most expenses, I can pretty much estimate pretty, pretty clearly. But I'm just saying, it's not quite as an exact science as taxation.
Because obviously, if, unlike the township, you could have a major problem at any time that could complete that fund completely.
Right.
Well, I'm saying, this is, this is what we're looking at right now.
Sure.
Heading forward 2020 with $3000 in that, at this point in time, so...
Well, there's nothing to say we can't, uh, make an account under replacement improvement that's maybe 950 and call it special project or something and put the $17,000 in there. And if we have to use it, we have to use it. And then we can see next year, there should be $34,000 in there, $35,200 or whatever.
Thirty-four.
That's what you want to do.
You can do that, but you still have it available if something major happens and that, you've kind of earmarked it, but yet you made it available if something happens to it.
Actually, you know, Lois can jump in on this from a chart of accounts, but you should probably put it under contingency as a separate line item, contingency for, for future costs.
Future, sure.
Specifically for future, you know, future water costs or whatever.
Well, that's basically where it is right now.
Let me break it out.
But at least it'd be separate.
It is broken out.
And the board can see it.
And looking at quick, if my calculation's right, we're leaving at $6.43 a thousand.
Correct.
And if someone's got an AI machine to correct me, but 7%, we run a .7? They ran 7% or a .7?
Who's that?
City.
They went full 7%.
So, uh...
Well, the, the, I can tell you right now, the, uh, the rate study, that, the joint rate study that's done is basically a wholesale rate. So, it's, it's, it's cost-based, but due to a court decision that was made, it has to be calculated on the utility basis.
Utility basis.
Okay, so we don't charge our customers based on utility basis. Utility basis is basically, it's cost plus...
A guaranteed return?
Profit, a return on investment.
Usually about a 7% return on investments.
So, it depends on what that number is.
So, taking 7% of that, you're talking 45 cents a thousand in that, whether it gets that high or not.
Well, no, we're, we're paying the, right now, I, what's our rate? I can't remember, like $2, just over $2 per thousand gallons.
With the discount rate.
Right.
Yep.
And plus, again, it's only one line item in the budget.
I know that, but it's one item to us. But when the bill goes to individual, it's some, it's a big line item to them.
Well...
Real quick on that.
Yeah. But I don't know what that number is, so I, I didn't put that in there.
No, I know that.
Contingency.
Segregating that out, knowing full well, if we have to use it, we have to use it, but it's there.
Right.
All right. So, if you, Lois, you want to put it into contingency, just make a separate account. Above or below miscellaneous, however your number structure goes. And is that the number? $17,600?
Yep.
Looking at? And that would come, so right now, you've got it in replacement improvement.
Right.
Kirk, because you redid the budget, right? So, that $17,000 would come out of there, move up, and readjust that number. Okay. Anything else along those lines? Think you're good, do you want to move to wastewater?
Well, just get a consensus on the water budget first and then...
We kind of tried doing that and it ended up falling apart. So, that's why I thought we'd...
Well, I think...
They're still kind of together because we were looking at it as a whole.
Yeah, but I'm good with the water rate as is and...
I am. I'm good.
You want to do that? That's fine.
So, the water's set at...
We tried.
Water's set at 6.43 per thousand, and I think there's the debt retirement, or no, that's wastewater. There was a, there was still another decrease, I think, on the debt retirement.
For water.
No increase, no decrease in the water rate.
Right.
So, we can do that, the water...
Actually, the water debt retirement went down 20 cents.
Okay, so the water, water's good now.
Water's good.
Okay. So, now we look at wastewater.
So, actually, there'd be a net decrease of 20 cents a month for the average user.
For all three.
Well, just for water.
Oh, would we take into consideration debt retirement? Break it.
$0.39 increase here.
Storm wa- or wastewater.
Wastewater.
Sure.
You're decreasing the, um...
We're decreasing the, um, debt retirements on both water and wastewater. And because I'm assuming when I read the, the narrative, because we're getting less years we have now coming up on this.
Right, it's, it's based on having just enough money to pay each year's debt. So, basically, as, as the number of customers increase, uh, you know, the debt will go down.
So, I don't want to, I don't want to muddle the whole thing up by saying this again, but...
Go again.
If we didn't decrease the debt retirement, can we pay it off earlier, I guess is my question.
Well, true, although it's a little bit late to make that decision. That, and that, that is a valid concern. The, the water project, not the water project, the Trowbridge sewer project, uh, the board, uh, in office at that time elected to set the debt retirement and leave it.
At fixed rate.
And we ended up, uh, retiring it, I think, three years early.
It was a fixed rate, did not decrease at all.
Now, when the water project went in and, and the, and the wastewater treatment plant project, uh, both of those projects, the board philosophy had changed with that board, which is basically, they wanted to keep going, to keep reducing it.
That was me.
Okay, yeah. Which is fine, I mean, either way, uh, but that way, you know, your monthly costs will go down. But you're still going to take 20 years.
And you're paying more in interest.
In other words, there's, in other words, it basically is a no early payout on both of the loans. Well, at least on one of them, and the other one was a board decision.
Yeah, and it would, it, basically, you know, having been here for both of those discussions, it, it revolved around impact to residents, is what it revolved around. And even though, even though leaving, leaving it as a, uh, leaving it as the standard declining rate cost more in interest, it was easier on the pocketbook over the long term. And that was the decision of that board. The succeeding board said, no, let's, I'm, the prior board said, no, let's keep it at a flat rate, pay it off earlier, and go from there. And we've, we have followed that ourselves in our projects that we've done with millage. The two, you know, the road projects we've done with millage, we kept it flat, paid it off. All of them have been paid off lo- earlier than were anticipated because of that, the growth, the growth in our, our tax rate, basically, year to year, paid it off earlier.
And you know, that idea of having them decrease is not a bad idea because we know that pretty much every year, the water rates or some part of them, or utility rates, actually, are going to go up for whatever reason. So, at least you get some kind of a balance there by having a decrease.
Right, yeah.
Okay, just, I was just curious.
And then also too, as we get more customers on the system that pay more money, it increases too, so... Yeah, it really depends on the segment of the population that's going to be affected by it because they, they have different opinion as to whether it's total cost versus monthly cost. So, the, and boards react differently to that in different situations.
It's basically short-term versus long-term.
So, Kirk, I have to apologize, I haven't got, I didn't get in to see you, but, so what's the justification for the $0.39 increase per thousand for wastewater?
Uh, well, basically, it's the, the big change is the, uh, what I'm estimated, uh...
For sales.
For sales, yeah.
So, we ended up losing like, or not, I shouldn't say losing, but changing your current budget about $500? You know, not even 300? Let's see, 4, 5, 6, 7?
Right.
So, that's not going to have any big impact on the $0.39?
No, I didn't, right. I just added those numbers to the expenses and offset it with the revenue.
Because the, you know, the average resident, even though it's a $0.39 increase, they're going to come out and ask, well, you know, why, what's justification for that? And that's what they're going to ask us for. And, um, I do understand if your sales are declining, which it correlates with water because that's how you charge your wastewater.
Yeah.
It, it makes sense to me, but the average resident doesn't understand that sometime. And then also too, the board has to realize is last year, we had a major leak at Lost Creek and they were getting charged a lot of wastewater that actually they weren't using. And, um, so that had an effect last year, and we probably were making up for that this year.
Well, that was, that was two or three, actually, two or three years ago.
Okay.
And actually, yeah, I, I did cover this at the last meeting, though. Uh, what happened is, uh, last year, I, uh, in order to meet the 2% limit, uh, I overestimated, you know, sales, what we're going to sell. So, so basically, I'm using, I'm back to using, uh, 2014 numbers.
The biggest differential in, in it is in the sewer plant flow cost, $53,000.
Yeah.
There's really nothing we can control on that.
And you said that was going to be the contributing factor too.
Can you rerun that by me as to why there's a big increase?
Uh, at the wastewater plant?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm going backwards in time and that and...
Yeah. That's, that's a good question, actually. Uh, let's see, let me, uh... What page is that on? I've got pages...
598.
590-dash-8. Yeah, well, it's kind of the same thing, only they, in, in the case of the wastewater plant. See, the flow has been decreasing, but next year, and these numbers are not, were not calculated, you know, by me, it's an increase in the flow cost.
So, these numbers, Kirk, were generated by the city marquette, correct?
Correct, yes.
The flow cost, the flow charge?
Right.
And we're 10% owners, so we have to...
Well, right. And another thing that happened that I explained at the last meeting was the, the advisory board adopted the budget, but it was the budget, the budget numbers. And, uh, they got changed after the subsequent city commission work session. And then even after that, another thing that the advisory board is responsible for, it's done actually by, uh, the city finance department. But it's, it's the breakdown, the per-unit cost, okay? Which is divided, you know, all these numbers are assigned different categories. And then they come up with a, an estimated cost per gallon. And that, I didn't get that until after this budget. So, this might be on the high side.
So, what I'm hearing is ours went up X number of dollars. I'm assuming the city marquette went way up then too.
They went 7, they went 7%, 8%, I think.
Yeah, right.
Way up in that too, so...
Yep.
Then Chalky went up.
So, again, that might not be an absolute number? Well, here's, here's another thing that I have mentioned in the past, but it's, it's kind of interesting. That's an estimated rate? So, at the end of their budget year, uh, if, if there's not enough money, okay?
I know that already.
We have...
They send us a bill.
But if it's too much money, we, we get a credit, so...
I've never gotten a credit since I've been on the board. Seems to always get a bill.
And another problem was the, the city, the city changed their budget year. So, basically, that's, was like a three-year process. So, you start out, they've always been, uh... What were they before?
They were July.
July 1st.
Yeah.
And they transitioned to October 1st.
It was just October.
So, it was like, it basically took three years to get down to...
One year they did that.
A real year.
Oh, I thought they did.
So, in other words, they were, their last year was like 18 months, I think?
Yeah, 18 months last year.
And there actually was a credit, you look at 87, 979.
Sure, make a liar out of it.
Right.
Good.
So, again, that might be, okay, it looks like it's declining and it probably was declining. I can't say for sure that it was declining because of these credits.
So, what I'm looking at here is most of our costs have stayed the same. But we've got a demand, or we got a flow charge increase from our plant that we are 10% owners in. So, there's not a heck of a lot we can do about that, really. Other than asking to justify it, I guess, that would be the only thing. And actually, Kirk is right, these, these numbers could be lower. And if they are lower, we probably will get a credit or you could do an adjustment, I'm sure, if it is lower.
Yep.
It probably won't be much.
Yeah, and if it ends up being a penny or something, that's, it's not really worth it to worry about that. It depends on how, what the amount is.
So, when I go through this line item, I start seeing these big differentials, huh? I don't know what they all about.
So, you know, basically, I guess my answer then to a resident would be is our costs have stayed the same. We've, we're paying more per, uh, unit for the flow cost now, and that's, and, you know, we can't do much about that. Hopefully, it's going to stabilize, you know, in the next few years and the rate will stay the same. But, um, I really don't see anywhere else we can, we can cut or... I mean, if, if we're getting that increase there, there's not much we can do about that.
Well, plus, in, in recent years, uh, you know, I have been adding to that, uh, improvements, uh, schedule as well. And we are, in fact, we've been constructing these things, so, uh... The, uh, Trowbridge is going to be... The, uh, Trowbridge is gonna be done next year. So in two thousand seventeen, there'll be ten thousand dollars that are gonna take off that list.
There's no more projects in.
South Vandenburg will come off next year, that's another thirty-five thousand.
There's no more big problem, I mean, projects along the highways, or?
Really, the, the, uh, the, uh, I agree with Randy that shows our big costs, but we do have a, we do show from, from last year's budget to this year's budget, a hundred thousand dollar increase in replacement improvements, but that's only because of what we have to do with the sewer, correct?
Uh, I don't think it was a hundred thousand dollar increase, actually.
Well, it went from two forty-six, three seventy-nine to three fifty-two, three fifty-three, oh eighty-three, so, okay, not quite a hundred thousand, but, actually, over a hundred thousand.
And where, where are you seeing that?
Total wastewater services.
Replacement improvements.
Eight ninety-one.
Well, the estimate's still based on six months doubled, kind of, too, so it's, these are from June.
Right.
Uh, down towards the bottom of your budget.
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't notice that. The original budget was?
Four sixty-three seventy-nine.
Right.
Yep.
But, okay, but that's, that's this year's estimate, that's not the budget anymore.
Right, right, that's my mistake, sorry.
So the original budget was four hundred and two, so we're actually going down.
Right.
So I think we're kind of stuck on this one. I think we're stuck with it.
Not a whole lot you can do with it.
Hopefully not stuck on it.
No.
No.
You want a consensus on that, or you wanna chew on it some more?
Well, I'm okay with it, I just think we have to, I think Kirk needs to, uh, find out from the city why that flow charge went up.
Flow rate.
Flow rate charge, or the flow rate went up the way it did, um, and that justifies our action, then. Otherwise, there's nothing else we can do, we're stuck really with it.
What do you, what did they give you, Kirk?
That's the only thing we can decrease, rest of it's pretty well set.
Do they give you a percentage, or they give you a real number, or how did they tell you that it's gone up?
Well, the first thing that, that I got was the, the actual budget, which is similar on our budget, it's got, you know, a thousand line items, a lot of numbers. And then, the way that they account for it is slightly different from us, so then I start looking at, okay, which one of these line items is a demand cost, which is flow rate. And I do that, uh, but the, the total breakdown, like I said, I didn't get until after. So the budget, that multi-page budget changed slightly. But then after that point, I got the actual breakdown from the finance director, uh, which, one of that, and that's only like a half a page of numbers, okay? Uh, one of them being the actual rate.
Well, I'm.
And I, and I could just take another look at that.
I, I just, I'm fine with it, Kirk, I just think if we had any residents that wanna know why, I think we should be able to justify that to them. And then, you know, if our cost increased from the city, well, there's not much we can do about it, we have to pass it along, so.
And again, the, uh, if you've got a fewer, a smaller number of, of people, customers, paying basically the same overall cost, you know, a, a minor change is obviously gonna be a little bit magnified.
Yeah, and I, and I'm looking at the future at this, Kirk, we are getting more customers every year, and I think this number's gonna stabilize somewhere in time because, I mean, we're not getting a lot, but, I mean, sometimes we get twenty, thirty customers.
What I anticipate is the, is the sewer projects declining, the new projects declining. Whereas on the water side, that's where it's gonna be increasing in the future.
Well, then I'm.
And we don't have a lot, but we've got some substantial cost there.
I'm fine with the wastewater.
Yeah, I am too. Kind of consensus, okay.
The wastewater is, is done, or consensus. Consensus, though.
We're not gonna have another meeting tomorrow, right?
No.
Just keep doing this day after day.
This is advertised as the final.
Okay. So solid waste is our next, and we have a.
Okay, this one, uh, there, there's really not much change. I'm not recommending, uh, you know, a, a change to our, uh, monthly billing. There's been a lot of discussion, there was a lot of discussion a few meetings ago about leaf drop-off, and I did look up, uh, and you know what, that didn't show here, but.
No.
Back in May, uh, the board did look at, at that, uh, and we did look at all the possible options for, you know, waste drop-off, or, or leaf and brush drop-off, and garden, yard waste.
And curb site.
And there was a cost associated with, uh, curb site pickup, uh, which I believe is gonna be something like a dollar twenty-something per month. You know, essentially with, with what we've got now, and two things happened, first of all, we lost our site, and it was time for a renewal of our contract with North Country. So we did renew it, and I think we only gave them like a five thousand dollar per year increase. But in addition to the monthly charges, if, if they actually do work, uh, like hauling, you know, like even the, the rubbish drop-off, uh, the monthly rubbish drop-off, we still have to pay, you know, the drop-offs included in their monthly fee, but if, if they have to haul it, which they do, it's gotta go to the landfill, there's an extra charge. You know, so in other words, it's predicated on, you know, like a ten-yard dumpster, but if we have three dumpsters, then we gotta pay extra for the extra dumpsters. And, and plus, we've got our labor costs, you know, which we're still actually, we've got labor costs involved because we're still sending a person out to the landfill to assist people with unloading their stuff.
Well, not transfer station, not the landfill, yeah.
Right.
But we don't have a front-end loader, there's a guy on a loader doing it. We don't have that there, right?
We got a guy, but we use air loader.
Right.
Which they charge for.
But we don't have to pick up the leaves and stuff that's laying on the ground.
No.
Just dump them up there and they take care of it.
Right.
Right, charge.
And that's still, you know, there's still, it's free there one day a month, and, and we did, you know, we can still extend, you know, in the spring and fall, a couple of weeks where it's free, but any, any other time, you can go any other time, and it's gonna cost you, I think, eight dollars.
When you say it's.
And you can take it to the landfill for nothing.
Right, when you, when you say it's free, though, what, what you're saying is, is we can take our leaves up there and dump our leaves.
Correct.
That's free.
Right.
But we, the township still has to pay to remove those leaves and take them someplace, correct?
Correct, yes.
Dispose of them.
So, and, and we, we also have to have a person there for just that specific reason. And then for the last two weeks, we've had to have a person there for this two weeks of drop-offs that we had, time we had drop-offs with, and which some.
Well, they weren't there for the drop-off, they were just there for the rubbish.
Drop-off was unmanned.
Oh, okay, okay. So basically, I, I think what we were looking for was what does it cost to have twice a year, one in the spring, one in the fall, or whatever, curb site pickup for leaves compared to what does it cost for twelve months out of year, being able to bring those leaves up to the landfill, or to the, to the drop-off site, which is free, except the fact that we have to pay for those leaves, taking them to the landfill, so.
But that's included in what everybody's paying?
Garbage fee, right, yeah.
Right, I know, but I, what I, I guess what I'm saying is, is that you, I think, I think if you're gonna compare apples to apples, I'd like to see the total cost, and you'd have to do an estimate, I'm assuming, on total yardage or whatever, that you're gonna be taking those leaves compared to what it would cost to have a, twice a year pickup in the, um, uh, curb site pickup.
Right, yeah, you know what, I think, uh, I switched to, I actually had, Lois made me a copy of the numbered pages. So I left my, if you've got a minute, I can.
And I, and I think, I think if we just had a, we just had a, a breakout just on those two costs, I think that's a, we don't need to have the complete budget change around, I'm just.
What they approved.
I'm just looking for a breakout of what the comparison costs, I don't wanna see a change in the budget, just.
Yeah, there was a, there was a communication, so you can pull that out.
Yeah, and it was, it was like a dollar twenty-something a month. Increase.
Additional charge.
Additional charge?
Yes, correct.
To provide for that.
So in other words, we'd raise our.
Pickup.
So those were pretty much, and then, of course, backyard composting, a lot of people just, you know, they don't haul it anywhere. They just rake it, they, they chop it up, and just leave it.
I was just thinking of that, how many people are we talking about that dropped this?
Well, that's a good question, I don't know how many, but.
Yeah, that's why I said you'd have to figure, you'd have to figure yard, you'd almost have to look at, well, the big, the biggest, well, I should say, I should say you could compare it to last year, this year, but unfortunately, when we don't have it supervised, everybody dumpster yard, Richard. So, yeah, I guess the only thing you could do is compare it to this year, where, well, then again, I, I guess my question also would be is, is when we don't have somebody there for the leaf drop-off, what's to prevent somebody that isn't a township resident to bring their leaves up there and drop them off?
Nothing, other than they check ID.
Yeah, but I, you know, I, I haven't seen, when I go there, I haven't seen them checking IDs, so I don't, I don't know.
The north country?
I, I guess I'm just saying, you know, have we, have we solved the problem of excess waste being dumped from non-residents up there if nobody's there to check compared to?
Well, I, I think it is way more under control, I mean, number one, uh, obviously, North Country has their staff there as well. And, uh, I mean, they, they do our pickups, they do a lot of pickups, so they're pretty familiar with, and plus, they know who the contractors are. That's basically what we're trying to stop, is, is contractors.
Right.
And they know who they are, and they, and they did, they'd stop pretty quick.
Now, just by way of warning, I did mention it to supervisor Durant this morning, uh, both of the city sites are now closed for the year, so rubbish may start to accumulate in the Trowbridge area again.
So John, just go stand out on the, on your corner and watch the cars go by and see if you know any of those people and where they're going.
I, I would be watching the cars or the trucks going by with a mattress or a box spring in the back. I don't think they're taking leaves, I.
No.
Oh, yeah, no, rubbish is more of an issue.
Leaves are not the problem, it's, 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 at least they're not the major problem.
Yeah, even if they do dump leaves in Forestville, they deteriorate anyway.
People find ways to deal with.
Well, and, and it's just to show you, just to show you example, I, the other day, I'm driving down Commerce, and I see a truck behind me with a, with a load of branches, and I'm looking and thinking, okay, now.
Where'd he go on?
He's going down Commerce, I don't think he's heading out to the landfill, so, but, you know, branches is branches, that's gonna disintegrate anyways, so. But it's what like, like John said, when you see mattresses and, and couches and everything else sitting on a trailer.
And, and, and actually, I try to bring this up every time we have this discussion. The curb site pickup, which is weekly, you can put out your rubbish.
Yep.
You just can't put out a truckload, but most people, I mean, you don't, you're not gonna have a truckload. The big problem is people that are remodeling, it's building materials.
Right.
I mean, there've been times, you know, when, when we had the, our site, and, so everything is visible, I'd go there and look on Monday morning, and, and there'd be one dumpster filled with exactly the same material, okay? So that'd be like one person, you know, dumping ten yards of their
Right.
house, you know?
Well, we did see a truckload full, and unfortunately, some of those truckloads are packed pretty full, but.
Well, I can see there's nothing major that you see coming up next year.
No, but, but there is, uh, before we leave this drop-off, we're, we're still talking to the city 'cause now they're stuck with a site, you know, that they may or may not be doing something with, their thing with the county fell apart. But there may be issues, well, there are issues, and I don't know how it's gonna sort out, with, with the county, the landfill itself.
Yep.
Uh, and they, they've got some serious problems that they haven't really dealt with yet, they're working on it, but, so, but they haven't come out officially. They did actually raise a tipping fee, uh, late last year, which I did reflect in our, in our, in our rates. But until I hear some definite numbers, I can't say what that's gonna be. I mean, they're, they're running out of cash, is the bottom line.
You mean the landfill?
Yes, the landfill, yeah.
Well, looking at this and going back over the treasurer's reports, and I was looking at the balance as of the September one, which is our latest one, it's a hundred and seventy-three thousand, one forty-four. I go back to the, uh, September of fourteen, and it's, uh, one thirty-eight, oh eighty-nine. You're talking forty-one thousand dollars over expenditures in one year and that, and, uh, looking at everything in there, so you're talking a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, and then when you look at, uh, the balance sheet, that the city, or, not this, the township owes is a hundred and eighty thousand as of, uh, oh, excuse me, that's eighty, that's fourteen, but I'll get the fifteen here.
Still a hundred and eighty?
No, there's, it's less now, and that. I've got it here, as of, uh, no, I had it here, I don't know what happened to it, it's less than that, it's probably a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, something like that. But we're just sitting here over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting there for the solid waste, and we're charging people fifteen dollars and ten cents. I can't see that personally, there's a lot of money sitting there, there's no, no big prob, uh, projects coming up.
Right.
I'm looking at decreasing it by, by fifty cents, you're talking, uh, fourteen hundred and twenty customers, that's, you're talking, uh, seven hundred and ten dollars for a year, it's eighty-five hundred dollars, and, uh, we're generating more, way more than that in revenue over expenses in a year's time and that. So that's one thing I'm looking at, and then, and the budget itself, when all of a sudden I'm looking at the transfer to the general fund of six thousand dollars, it hasn't been done for three years.
Right, and I, I did that this year.
So I'm looking for the justification, the rationale for that, what that six thousand actually covers in that, too, so.
Take a look at your rate study.
That's a good question, I can certainly take that off.
Yeah, well, it's in your, it's in your fee for service study, what it actually, that's for, that's for administrative services from general fund to the, the enterprise funds.
This is the only one that's, you're putting it in, you're not putting it in the rest of them from that, uh, study, are we?
What's that, no?
The study that you're referring to?
No, that's, that six thousand was historical, it didn't go the last couple of years because the board put a restriction on Kirk's budget, so he could not contribute and stay within that restriction. So he did not transfer to the general fund to cover our expenses.
I don't remember putting a restriction on it.
Yeah, not more than two percent increase, yep.
He did that for two years.
Yeah.
But even using that, that six thousand is, is relatively minor when you're talking about in, in, uh, ten months or six, nine months, forty-one thousand dollars over rev, over expenses in that, uh.
Yeah, the major thing you're funding there are closure costs, future closure costs.
Well, that's already taken care of. That's in your, uh, uh, landfill, investment in the landfill and that, too, that's all, should be taken care of in your, in your actual fee.
That shouldn't be anything less than that, so that should be there.
That's an asset cost that you have to be, uh, be concerned with, that's a prepaid expense, that's nothing there.
Well, it's prepaid, but that's, that's an example of, that's part of the tipping fee.
Right.
Okay.
Right, it's part of the tipping fee that we pay them.
Right, but the tipping fees, uh, you might recall the previous director, every year, he didn't raise fees for many years. And guess what, the, you know, the money disappeared, so, you know, funds, state-required funds, and that's one of the things that got nailed on, okay? They're required to have these, these funds to deal with potential, not, not only closure, but any
Failures.
You know, contamination issues, whatever. And, and we've been funding that through tipping fees, you know, he was taking that money to use for other things, okay? So, as one way to not raise tipping fees, but the bottom line is, that money's gone, you know? So that's a state violation, number one, secondly, the money's gone, and thirdly, uh, we're being told that even, like their day-to-day operational checking account is done, pretty much week to week.
So you wanna try to fix his budget with our money, then?
No, no, I'm just, and I'm not suggesting any changes, I'm just saying, you know, uh, and I'm not saying we're in any trouble, and I'm not trying to alarm anyone, I'm just saying. You know, I don't think.
I'm just saying with the actual balance we have in that. And we're not doing anything for the residents. Sure, the landfill has a major problem and it may come back to haunt us at some point.
Well, we are doing something for the residents. I think we're providing probably at least as much and, and more than many communities are providing.
That's true, but you've still got dollar, a big dollar amount sitting out there that isn't allocated for anything in that. We're generating, uh, somewhere around thirty-five hundred dollars over, over expenses every month in that. In that area, so you go that, well, and, uh. Well, that's what I'm looking at is if we do nothing and we're just sitting here. We're going to generate another forty thousand, forty thousand dollars in the next, next year.
Given, given the situation at the current landfill, I would suggest that you continue on that mode. Because you don't know what it's ultimately going to cost you as a constituent member if the landfill goes deficient. I mean, as a constituent member, we'll be responsible for our share of the cost of whatever it is to put it back into operation or close it.
They're not out of the woods yet.
I'm just bringing it up because I, when I started looking at figures here, it's.
Well, I, I'm looking at the, you know, the budget. I mean, it's got the last, the three, last three years actual. Okay, two thousand and fourteen, we did make thirteen thousand. Thirteen, we made twenty thousand, nineteen thousand. And the year before that, we lost twenty-four hundred, so I don't see any huge.
I'm just saying that the accumulated amount is what you're referring to, the accumulated amount that's in the fund.
I'm just looking at the money I, on my treasurer's report, we're sitting there and it's beginning balance and the expenditures and the, uh, revenue coming in. And it just, it just keeps rolling up, continually rolling up in that too. So we don't have much in, uh, investments in that thousand dollars net. But it's continual month in and month out in that.
Well, okay, I'm looking at the history here also.
Well, that was the intent of that fund.
I don't see it rolling up. It's been pretty much the same for quite some time.
I'm looking at the money in the bank that we've got for you for the solid waste.
So what are, what are you thinking, Ernie? What's your, what's your proposal?
I was looking at, at fifty cents decrease. It would cost about eighty-five hundred dollars a year.
Where would that, where would that come out of? The numbers are pretty straight across. Unless you're looking at the six thousand. The other accounts did make a transfer.
Okay, what, what you're talking, looking at is the actual budget. I'm looking at the dollars in the bank at this point in time. And it doesn't really reflect a lot of this here.
So more.
It's not even here.
Yeah, so there's about five thousand over this year, from this year to next year. If the numbers stay the same, let's assume we could transfer five thousand into the account.
So how would you address it when you look at the, you have right now in the solid waste as of the September? I have a balance of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars sitting there. And that, that isn't even really, is not even reflected in the actual, uh, budget. Because on.
Right.
So where you take it out, where you don't take it out. That's a good question. How are you going to do it?
Well, the history, the history I'm looking at shows in two thousand and two, we had fourteen-hundred and thirteen thousand. Okay? So we're not, I don't see the increase every year.
Which year?
Two thousand and, uh. Two thousand and three, we had fourteen hundred. That's the highest number I see.
Far as people wise?
No, retained earnings.
Retained earnings. Five ninety-six, five on the budget.
Back in the back of your, yeah. Unless it's just because it's been funded like two or three or five thousand dollars each year.
And the bottom is retained earnings there.
Yeah, you can see, I mean, it's. I don't see any huge increases. Nineteen ninety-eight, it was two hundred and ninety-two thousand.
All I'm doing is looking at the reports that I give you every month. And that's been increasing continually.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to tie that to. The real world.
Well, that, you know, that, that increase, if I recall, and it's been a long time since we had a discussion, but if I recall, a target was, I think, two hundred and fifty thousand for that fund to grow to. There was a, there was a targeted, a targeted amount that, it was after an audit. And there was a targeted amount that everybody felt comfortable with a, a target for closure to get to two fifty and then cap it. You know, not, not collect beyond the two fifty in that closure fund.
Well, we'll already be on that then because we know we owe a hundred and eighty-some thousand. Three fifty in there. So what you're saying then, Ernie, is we'd either, we'd have to take money out of there to fund a decrease.
Right, now, so I'm, I'm bringing it up because there's an awful lot of dollars coming in there and it's gaining every month. When I went through and did the calculations and that. We don't do anything this year. I think we're going to have to really seriously look at it next year and see where we're at.
Well, I'd just like to bring it down to an even number, fifteen dollars. Fifteen-ten's kind of odd. Even if you brought it to fifteen dollars a month, that wouldn't be that much. Or fourteen-fifty, but.
That'd be sixty cents.
Would we try that Kirk for one year and see how that would go? I mean, fourteen, six, fourteen fifty?
I mean, that's, it's based on the number of customers.
You have fourteen-seventy-five, do you?
Well, the thing is, is I see the big numbers as Ernie stated in the return, or ending retained earnings, which I understand is for the closure cost. And do we know how much the closure costs are going to be? Probably not.
No, or when?
Or when, but I mean, it's probably going to be a couple of hundred thousand dollars, I'm thinking.
It'll be more than that.
We've got about three fifty to, what we owe and what's in that.
And then whatever, if we have to make.
Even if we had three hundred thousand, that would be.
Even, and if we have to make the landfill whole again as a constituent member, that might, it'd come out of that too.
I'm just nervous about when they find out what really is going on out there. Our cost, no matter what we have, it's not going to be enough.
Well, I would hope.
But our share of it is going to be.
I would hope that there's some insurance for, you know, for that kind of activity, fraudulent activity.
I'd be more comfortable if we put it off one year.
Could we say then that, that, you know, I don't know if this would help Ernie at all, but I mean, since we have this thing. If the board next spring or next fall decides that we want to do a curbside pickup rather than a drop off. Rather than say that's going to cost everybody a dollar something more a month, can we say we'll take it out of that fund?
You could do that.
Up to you.
Yeah.
It's up to the board.
Right now, once is not working, but we had extended this year. So on, in the fall, you need at least three pickups.
Well, it, it works in this, it works in the city, so I can't see why it wouldn't work in a township.
City got two pickups.
So I said, one in the spring, one, that's what I said, one in the spring, one in the fall.
No, in the fall, you, one time you leave by the roadside and the other time you leave more, it has to be bagged.
Fall, one for yard waste and another for leaves specifically.
They got one for brush, one for. Leaves.
Well, I, I think, I think the major, the major thing seems to be leaves, if you ask me. Yard waste is, yard waste is a whole nother story.
Yeah, for us, it's leaves because we're a wooded community. I mean, we're, we're heavily wooded.
So I, I would say, you know, if you need two pickups, one for yard waste, yard waste they could bring up there. If they want to cut a tree down, that can go up there. But I mean, leaves seem to be the big, the big issue, so I, if. And it's just, it's just a thought. I mean, if you're, if we're looking at this, this big amount of money, it's, it's the place that if we do decide to do it, that's the place we can get that from.
Other than that, if we're comfortable with it.
Is it? It's always fun to hold money for mother.
I think ten cents, bring it, as Randy said, bring it down to even fifteen dollars and be done with it and that. We're still going to generate because you're only talking about seventeen hundred dollars a year at this point in time.
And I look at it too, the, as Kirk stated, we, we could end up getting a bill for this landfill that we're not anticipating and we're going to have some cash for that, so.
If we get a big bill, the general fund may have to pay up real quick and that.
Well, and we're not going to be the only ones getting a big bill. We're not the only ones that are feeding that landfill, so.
Not going to happen overnight either that they'd expect it.
But at least we'd have some of that covered, which, you know, wouldn't hurt the residents as much as other places.
Right.
Right, so you're saying go to fifteen dollars?
I would say fifteen dollars.
All right, I'll go, I agree with that.
Leave the seasonal at seven.
I like the idea of taking it out of that fund if we, if we find another way. I got somebody I'm going to talk to. I thought I would get ahold of them today, but I, I didn't, couldn't even leave a message, so.
I have a question. Randy, you have, uh, you have any idea how much money you'd be able to pay back? Are we going by, just by the interest again? As far as, uh, what the general fund owes the solid waste?
Off of what's left, yes. There's not a whole lot left in the general fund this year.
May get some point in time where we have to look at paying more back to it and look at some of our other expenses and say. We may have to pay back the solid waste faster than that because it's been going six and a half years now.
It's going to be a little difficult because the reimbursements back for taxes for us took a significant hit out of our fund balance. Well, see where that, see where that goes. But yeah, you're right. I mean, there's, uh, I can't remember what the balance, the remaining amount is. Okay, one seventy-four, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-four thousand.
That's been about, about seven years now.
Well, we did put some back last year a little bit and the year before, we've been picking away at it.
Well, I'm good at fifteen dollars and leaving the surcharge as, as is and I don't think anything else needs to be tipping, tipping fees areas.
Well, how, how about another suggestion? I mean, if you want to do that.
Okay.
About deleting the transfer to the general fund.
Do what?
To the general fund. I mean, it is kind of an ironic, I mean, basically.
Are you saying eliminate it?
Yeah.
I couldn't quite hear you either, what you were saying.
I mean, first of all.
Well, what do we need, twelve hundred dollars?
You got the general fund owing.
Cover the ten cents.
The solid waste fund. And apparently you can't make all the payments that need to be made. And then you've got the solid waste fund contributing money to the general fund.
But it'd help to pay back, eh, Kirk? Figure it out.
We're just kind of going in circles is what I'm saying.
It's a good switcheroo.
And when you, when you look at it, I mean.
One fourteen.
You know.
So that's ten cents.
To me, the solid waste fund is a little bit different because basically the services are being provided by a contractor. You know, there's very little that the township is actually doing other than the administration, so.
And if that's the case, the last two years I want that credited against our debt. Twelve thousand dollars that we didn't get.
Well, if I give you six thousand dollars, then you got six thousand dollars, you know, so you can give it back.
Basically what we were doing in essence.
About seventeen hundred dollars.
Well, and, and you, you have to look at the, you have to look at the wastewater as well as the water and everything else. We're not contributing to the general fund in that either, so.
So let's take the seventeen hundred out to cover the ten cents, so you can just, your contribution then to the general fund would be. Four, what is that? What's the difference?
Forty-three hundred.
Six thousand, forty.
Forty-three.
Forty-three hundred?
Sixteen ninety-two, but figure seventeen hundred.
Forty-two hundred, whatever.
What seventeen hundred now?
To cover the ten cents, so you don't have to worry about changing your budget for ten cents for fourteen hundred customers. Decrease your.
Your collection.
Contribution to the general fund.
Oh, okay, so whatever the ten cents equals and, okay, I got you.
I personally like the idea of seeing the, that six thousand dollars is coming off of the.
The loan.
Loan. We didn't, they're going to give you six thousand dollars. This is six thousand off what you owe us of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Fine, then I would suggest that we take the six thousand dollars from the annual, from the annual conference to balance the budget. Round and round.
So I'm. Well, I'm more comfortable doing something like that rather than. You know, your prior suggestion was basically to submit an imbalance budget and to lose money. Which you don't want to do. Doesn't feel right to me.
He just wanted to take it off the savings account.
Be subsidizing solid waste.
But I like, yeah, if we decide we're going to need, you know, whatever, a thousand, I don't have any clue what that would cost. To do extra pickup or a curbside, we could just take it out of that.
It was a dollar, I think it was a dollar twenty a month extra.
Yeah, that's what I remember, right?
Dollar twenty a month.
I mean, there is a contingency, so.
That must be what's happening. The contingency is getting put in there. Because if the budget's that close, yeah, there's seventeen thousand. I bet that's what it is.
Well, and, and again, because of the uproar of this whole leaf collection thing, I think it makes sense to me to say that we have this money, you know. That's one solution to this problem and we can try it for years, see if it works, doesn't work.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Always go back.
I'm good with that, Lance.
Okay, sounds pretty good.
We'll go on fifteen then.
Fifteen dollars, yeah, and leave the seasonal at seven because that's what it's been.
And you're just taking it, whatever that increase is off of the six thousand that we pay the general fund.
Or if Randy needs the seventeen hundred, take it out of your contingency.
So the record will show that Randy Rotary is big on solid waste.
Ten cent decrease.
Hmm, that's pretty awesome.
Got it all written down.
Yeah, we say, we don't talk about much, but when that bill comes and they see the little, the little bit, makes a big difference to the individual out in the, out in the field, I'll say.
I bet you we won't hear a word if it's ten cents less.
I like your concept.
No, but we'll have that to offer.
We'll, we'll have to remind them, hey?
Put one page in the utility bill all by itself, put ten cents off.
On a, as long as we're talking solid waste on a different note, I'm, I'm really surprised that the authority has not called a membership of the, a, a meeting of the constituent members to talk about their financial situation. I mean, we all have a stake in it and we have, nobody has a clue of what's happening.
I'm figuring next year they're going to have to do something drastic.
They discussed that this year. They should get together, but nothing happened.
Well, I mean, we're the, you know, as constituent members, the, the nineteen, well, nineteen, twenty-one, the twenty-two, the twenty-two participants would be. Left holding the bag basically. So, you know, they represent you as a, as a group, as a constituent member, but you have no voice in what's happening and you have no information on what's happening.
Other than what's in the paper.
Surprised the, the MTA or, or somebody hasn't demanded a, a meeting to discuss where they're at. So we can answer budget questions. What are we, what are we?
I'll bring that up at the next time, see what happens.
What, what should we be planning? I mean, are, is there an imminent failure? Is there a take, takeover? I mean, what happens? Do they appoint a interim financial manager or what do they, you know, what do they do? I have no idea what, what the requirement is being a DEQ regulated entity.
Because in the minutes, you don't see anything too.
At the meetings, you don't see anything. I've been to several of their meetings and they don't talk about it.
I know, they're fighting within. Well, why don't we just ask, send a letter and ask them?
Well, that's a suggesting is that, you know, as a group of, well, as one, you probably don't get a response, but if it was with the constituent members.
Metro should be, we're at the end of the.
Expect they'd have to respond.
Then the metro and that's it, I think, maybe the liquor.
Do we have any problem with metro? It's right there next to, uh, solid waste. Check that out.
Metro authority we've used in the past for a couple of purchases, we participated with the fire department on the purchase of the wildland. Basically, it's designed for, uh, maintenance and activities that we conduct within the right of ways, the utility corridor right of ways. Whether it's firefighting, you know, wildfires, uh, removing tree branches, things, you know, that are impeding wires or, or whatever. That's where that gets funded from.
There is much we can do about that.
It's a fee that we just, they send it to us. It comes directly from the state. If we don't take it, somebody else does.
So do we get that number? Do, how, where does the fifty-four twenty-eight come from?
That's the accumulation. That's the, that's the, that's the balance. That's what's currently received. And did we receive from them yet or is it going to be delayed? I know it's going to be delayed initially.
Or we get it in September possibly.
Yeah, usually we do, but there was supposed to be a delay this year and I wasn't sure if it had come in as yet.
Okay, then stormwater?
Okay, the stormwater, uh, you know, two thousand and fifteen, uh, we finally, uh, completed the, uh, stormwater management ordinance. And, uh, budget wise, there's really not, uh, uh, the way it's set up is the only revenues we'll get is a permit application fee of five hundred dollars. Everything above and beyond that is, uh, if we have any expenses, which we'll have some expenses, but, uh, you know. but, you know, because we've still got to review and inspect and enforce the ordinance. But the, that's going to be backcharged to, to the applicant. So that's essentially, other than the five hundred bucks, it's money in. I should say money out, money. So, but I, in my opinion, I, I do appreciate the board doing this. There, there's, not that we have a huge problem in the township, but there are basically some pretty big gaps in what we have before. And the gaps mainly are the, we had no ordinance. So the only ordinance was, was the county drain commissioner ordinance, which technically only applied to established drain districts, which was primarily, you know, the east side and the, and the south and of Turwich Park. And then we do have, on the west side, we do have another drain district, which impacts not a lot of residents. So our commercial district basically was outside of any established drain district. So that, that was the impetus for creating the ordinance. But another big gap was the, a developer would submit the site plan, okay? Would be reviewed by the drain commissioner's engineer and approved. And he would construct, maybe he would construct what was submitted, maybe he wouldn't construct what was submitted. So in other words, he would get permission to construct something, you know, stormwater detention primarily is. It's what they were, they would construct. So maybe we get constructed, maybe we wouldn't get constructed. Even if, if it were constructed, that was basically the end of the story. So the thing that we've added is, first of all, there's a more detailed review requirement. And we've changed one part of the ordinance. Planning zoning actually already said that you can't discharge a developed site. You can't discharge any more stormwater than existed prior to development. Okay. So the county drain code basically put that number at a fifty-year storm. Okay. And the township ordinance has increased that to a hundred-year storm. So in other words, the, you're required to detain a larger volume. And what's happening? That number changes every year and it's established by, by the feds. But I'm sure everybody recognizes we have more extreme weather events now every year. It kind of, it's increasing. So when it rains, it rains harder, you know. When it snows, it snows more of it. When it's dry, it's drier for longer. You know, when it's hot, it's extremely hot. So more frequent hurricanes, all kinds of events and stormwater being one of them. So that's why that number keeps increasing. And plus, you know, since we have the ordinance, we can actually enforce that. So another key component was if you, if you have an approved system installed, you also have to, the owner of the property needs to sign a maintenance agreement. So they've got to submit a plan, which we get to approve for maintenance. Because you just can't build something and then never look at it again. So maintenance is required.
Some people think you can.
So anyway, that's, it's, it's, I think the impact is going to be kind of significant. And it's low cost, or basically no cost to the township, other than the ordinance developed, which is, which is done now. So again, hats off to the board for approving that. But again, budget-wise, it's, you know, there's not much of a budget other than five hundred dollars for an application.
So this one's good too?
Yep.
Yes. We have a consensus budget.
I think so. But I was trying to, I asked Randy today, what, have we pretty much approved everything by consensus?
The general fund has been approved, yeah.
Much.
Anybody have anything?
The big things that were hanging out were the utility rates.
We haven't seen the rate, rates at all. It looked really, the list of rates for everything in that either.
Yeah, that's, I was going to put a sticky on.
The rate?
Are, are we guessing, there's no changes in here for?
I, we did not, we did not project changes other than there were, the fire department had put in some, some additional charges. But we basically, pending the board's approval or taking a position with regard to the rate study, we did not materially change the fee structure for this year.
I want to make sure it wasn't wrong.
What we've been discussing at this point.
Correct.
Yeah, I put our fees in, in my memos, water, sewer and, and solid waste fees.
They were, they were in the discussion. But I'm saying normally we get that whole list of everything.
Right, I had asked, I had asked the department heads after you had your meeting with Gordon to prioritize or recommend any fees that they thought they wanted to institute or start working towards for two thousand and sixteen. And you've received all of those, so.
Well, I, and I would think the fact that if, like I said, if we start looking at two thousand and seventeen's budget in January, we can start looking at the rate increase schedule that we have.
Number two on my list.
Yeah. I mean, we, we need to, it's sort of more, the more time we have to incorporate that, the better also.
Yep, so I'm thinking in the next meeting, we will look at our calendars and see if we want to tackle something in January. Maybe in between our meetings. The first one's on the fifth and, and the seventeenth or whatever.
But now, on the next meeting, it would be the first meeting in December, we'll have the information to the paper because this will be the public hearing.
Right.
You can't, you can't have the public hearing December first, you don't have time.
Okay, that's the question I raised.
You don't have time. It has to be the fifteenth now because the, the statute requires that you publish, the notice of the public hearing be at least seven days prior to the meeting. And it takes three days to get the ad in the paper. So you need, need ten to eleven days. So if, 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 if you have a consensus budget tonight, you still don't have enough time to get, because you've got three days to get the ad in the paper for them to set it and everything in the format it needs to be and then to run, it has to run one time, seven days prior to the, to the meeting.
It's scheduled a special meeting.
You could.
We can do it all at once.
The easiest, the easiest thing for you to do, if you're at a consensus budget now, I have numbers that I can put together the ad. Get the ad in the paper by the, by December fourth, that would run the ad prior to the December fifteenth meeting. You could have the public hearing and consideration of the budget at the same meeting. Doesn't have to be separate meetings.
Which we've done in the past.
Which we've done in the past. No, it does not have to be separate. You could, you could do all at the same time. You do the public hearing for the budget, the truth and taxation hearing, and then the consideration of adoption of the budget.
We just open it for a public hearing and close it.
That's it. Yep.
We've done that in the past.
We have. And that still gives you, you would have two and a half weeks between the fifteenth and the end of the year if you wanted to make whatever amendments or whatever to the budget in that intervening period. If you were to decide to adopt the fee structure as recommended by Gordon Striker, you know, then you could make that, make that, make that decision. But you still have the, the opportunity after the fifteenth to amend if you wish to.
Well, I think from the clerk's perspective, I think you have a consensus budget with the fee structure that was, not with the adjusted fee structure, but.
The fee, fee structure as recommended plus what the department's had in the fees.
And I think you got enough information to put together a consensus budget for publication.
I do. All right, we can do it. So if I can get some rough numbers from you.
Now we can go to supper.
By, you know, next, early next week sometime.
Before I left, I stuffed it in my mouth.
If I can get an ad in the paper by December fourth, we're in good shape.
I feel like I'm shrinking.
I got it up on my laptop as well.